The Columbus City Council Meeting for May 3rd, 2021 will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, Nebraska Revised Statute 84-1407, a new copy of the Open Meeting Act is hanging on our wall for anyone's viewing. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Bulkeley?
Here.
Augustine Schulte?
Here.
Barr? Hemmer?
Here.
Jablonsky?
Here.
Creshaw?
Here.
Lor?
Here.
Roth?
Here.
Schilling?
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Mrs. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other as well as to all of our citizens. Amen.
Good evening. Welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. If at any time during our meeting this evening, anyone in our audience would like to address an item on our agenda, we'd ask you come forward, give your name and address. We'd ask that you keep any comments to five minutes or less. I'd like to welcome everyone that's watching live streaming, YouTube. This would be the first?
Second.
The second council meeting, and it will probably be the wave of the future and what we will be doing from now on as we move forward. So with that, we'll go to consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 4A, minutes of the April 19th, 2021 city council meeting. Item 4B, minutes of the April 20th, 2021 Civil Service Commission meeting certifying police officer candidates, Brian Gierna, Ryan Otten, and Benjamin Wotypka, and additional police officer candidate Renata Clark for potential position in the future. Item 4C, reappointment of Steve Anderson to the Board of Adjustment for a three-year term. Item 4D, reappointment of Todd Tobiasin to the Joint Airport Zoning Board, excuse me, for a four-year term. Item 4E, Resolution Number R21-63, approving the agreement with Nebraska Department of Transportation Aeronautics Division in an amount not to exceed $21,700 for crack and joint sealing at the Columbus Municipal Airport. Item 4F, Resolution Number R21-64, authorizing payment of various improvement projects. Item 4G, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and councilors, is there anything you would like removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Did the box come up?
Yeah, nothing come up. Did I get John Lor's computer?
No, because mine's not either. I'm gonna...
How about doing a roll call, please?
Do the roll call and then I'll switch to another program here. Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Barr? He's absent. Hemmer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That brings us up to a special presentation this evening.
Item 6A is proclamation declaring the week of May 2nd through May 8th of 2021 as Respect for Law Week.
Whereas the crime rate in our community, as well as in our neighboring communities continues to rise every day, and whereas the problem of crime touch and affect all segments of our society and can erode the moral and economic strengths of our community, and whereas our vitality as a community and as a society depends to a great degree on the willingness of each individual member to give of his or her time and talents in volunteer service, and whereas the Optimist Club and their 150,000 dedicated volunteer members continue to sponsor and support programs aimed at combating crime and encouraging a respect for law. Now therefore, I, James B. Bulkeley, Mayor of the City of Columbus of Nebraska, do hereby proclaim the week of May 2nd through May 8th, 2021 be declared Respect for Law Week, and ask all citizens to join in the Optimists in carrying this message forward. We will also then on Friday at the Optimist Club meeting, present this proclamation through the Optimist Club to deserving law officers, I believe, from our police force, our sheriff's department possibly, and then even maybe a state trooper. They pick these individuals to say thank you and show them the appreciation that we have for them. All right, we will move forward to public hearings.
Item 7A, public hearing, amendment to the redevelopment plan for the 23rd Street Corridor Redevelopment Area, 23rd Street Corridor Area District TIF Project, located east of 33rd Avenue and west of East 11th Avenue between 19th Street and 27th Street, also known as Redevelopment Area 6. The Planning Commission recommends approval. This is a public hearing.
Is there anyone here this evening to speak against this public hearing?
Kimberly Hofer, 4505 63rd Street. I also own property on 23rd Street, commercial property. I've been on the Planning Commission for two terms, and I'm a real estate broker for almost 30 years in this community. I have some questions that I want to put forth that I'm hoping that the commissioners, or excuse me, the council people will consider in their judgment as to if they move this project forward. My number one concern is this is a different type of TIF project. This is not the ones that we have seen that have been mostly for housing, some redevelopment for economic development for businesses. This is, if I'm right, pool TIF that the city becomes liable for the bond that is issued to pay for this project. So if I'm not understanding any of this, you please step in. What that means is that the city takes that bond out and is responsible over the life of that bond to pay it back. In the proposal, it was written that the assumption was in the properties along Area 6 had to appreciate to the degree of 2.25% every year, year over year. To be able to accumulate, the project was 9.3 total. Our part that we would have to bond would be approximately, not exact, 6.3.
6.663.
Okay, 6.63. That was close. My concern is if it does not appreciate in that value, how does the city then, if we're liable for that bond, how do we pay that off? The other thing that concerns me is by definition, a TIF project in this degree for a pool TIF has to add value. It's a tool to add value to property so that that increases the tax value, so that the excess above the base is what pays that off. A maintenance project like this concerns me that we're not adding value. We're doing, in my opinion, mostly a maintenance project that should be done over the years anyway. Just because you put in upgrades to streets or the sidewalks, or possibly some of the utilities, and then put some decorative street lamps up, it's not going to add to my value of my property. I couldn't sell that property today just because you resurfaced the street at a higher value. So that concerns me. Number one, how did we come up with 2.25% year over year? Now, I talked to the special TIF attorney, and he said, because I tried to follow it back as to how did we get that, no one had contacted the county assessor to have a conversation or get values for this historical number that they created.
That's not true. We have all the GIS and property values of all the community, and we have staff in City Hall...
I understand that, Tara, but the GIF only goes back 24 months.
No, it doesn't. We have old data. We have four years of old data.
Okay, so the county assessor tells me that you should have only been able to see 24 months.
Right, but if we had 24 months 24 months ago and we saved it, then we have four years till now. Right? We've saved the data, the annual data, year over year. So what we did to come up with the 2.25 is to go back and look at the actual facts over the years. So we took this area, Area 6, and we looked at the property values, the property assessed values every year for four years, and we averaged those increases, and it was 2.25%.
So you took the properties that were gained in that area, the new properties that were built?
Total assessed value.
By adding in that whole area, you took in the brand-new areas that were built on or changed during that four-year period?
Anything that changed in that four-year period.
Right. So again, my concern is if that is the timeframe that you used, I don't believe that that is probably enough information to be able to give you a 2.25% appreciation value. So the question is, if that does not happen, how do you pay off the bond? Who is responsible for that liability? If the city is the redeveloper in this type of a situation, how do you pay that off?
First of all, and you mentioned that you sit on the Planning Commission, and you do, and there's been assumed increases in property value in excess of 2.25 that had no support material that I recommended not be approved. Like, there was one downtown here that assumed 3% year over year on one property. And so...
Again, that's a different project.
But can I finish answering? No, it's the same premise, though. The annual, after the improvements are made, what is the assumption of increase? And that property owner wanted to assume 3%, and the Planning Commission approved it unanimously.
Different project, Tara, because this is different. That is their liability. When they have a bond...
Correct.
And the redeveloper does that project, that bond is their responsibility.
That is correct, but...
This bond is the city's responsibility.
But it's the city's responsibility and the Planning Commission's responsibility to make sure they're allowing TIF responsibly, too. So what I'm saying is, how can 3% be responsible one time, but 2.25 isn't another time? I think it is responsible, is my point. And the second point is that if the maximum assumption can't be raised of $6.663 million, then you're correct, the city does have to pay that difference, and they would do it with general fund revenue, sales tax, other taxes, other revenues that the city has.
So if it doesn't, let's say that the market goes sideways on us, of which we have seen some of that happen this past year because of COVID. Some of the commercial properties are sitting vacant because the landowner, or excuse me, the tenants are finding out that they don't need to rent as much space as what they were renting. If that market goes sideways on us and we can't raise that money to pay off that bond, are we being responsible by assuming a 2.25% increase? And I'm assuming that all of you read the email that I sent to you. I sent every one of you an email with my concerns on it, and I got very nicely. Mr. Jablonsky, had a very nice visit with him. Mr. Lor had a good visit with him, and of course, Mr. Mayor, you sent me your responses to my questions. My concern is, the reason I'm here tonight is I'm assuming that the rest of the council either didn't understand my questions or didn't have the concerns. So that's why I thought it was important for me to come and ask these questions face to face. Always when I point out my concerns, I always try to come to the table with possibly some suggestions to see if that would possibly come to some compromise. What I would like to see happen with this project, because the project isn't starting until, my understanding of, in a year or so before they would start, to relook at this project to see if we are actually looking at the reality of what's happening in this Area 6. And then, let's look at, instead of going from a 5.5 project that was supposed to be done and approved with sales tax in July of last year through the Capital Improvement Plan, let's look at that to see, is there any way that we can get that back down from 5.5 for the original number to this new number is 9.3? I'm not quite sure how we went to this high number in such a short period of time. I understand that there's materials, I'm in the business, so I understand that, that there's increase in those costs. But maybe it would be in our best interest if we looked at this as a city project with us being on the line for the liability, that maybe we need to reassess this and look at it, maybe is there a way to bring that number down so that we can go with the original plan of sales tax or make the bond liability smaller than it was with this proposal?
Kim, I would answer that in this way. We started with what you were asking us to look at, and because of the changes that came to us through the state, we are where we are today. And our original plan was sales tax, and we had worked through some budget sessions, some preliminary ideas on how we would have handled the 5-point-whatever million in sales tax, feeling we could do that, but we would really be skimping on some other things that maybe needed to be done but would have to be put off. That 5-point-whatever became 9.3, not by our doing. Not by our doing whatsoever. That 9.3 came to us as a state number for us then to work on as the new estimate. Correct me if I'm wrong. Please step in. We did add, how many hundreds of thou... we put a...
You added 590,000 in streetscaping.
Streetscaping and facade.
Right, and then the water main will be reconstructed. So, and that's what I wanted to address to Kim, and for everybody's knowledge, the Highway 30 from, you know, about Hy-Vee out to East 11th, which is about Walmart, is going to be totally reconstructed. All the pavement will be new, the water mains will be new, sewer will be lined, there'll be new sidewalks and some streetscaping. The city is responsible for 20% of the pavement, and that amounts to, you know, several million dollars. And then, we're also responsible for 100% of betterment costs. And betterment is city water, city sewer, streetscaping, different things like that we're responsible for. So in the grand scope of the project, we're getting a pretty good deal for a total reconstruction for, you know, a fraction of the total cost. But the bad part about it, or the kind of part out of our control, is the project. Other than that streetscaping and that if we're tearing up the concrete, all of that street, we should replace that water main. It's in the best interests of all those properties along there that while the road's torn up, we replace the water, reline the sewer, all those things. So these aren't things that we can just really eliminate doing. Because if we did them later, it would, A, cost more, and B, be more of an inconvenience, rip up new pavement, all those things. It wouldn't make sense.
I understand that, but it just is hard to swallow to go from a 5.4 acceptable project...
Yeah, you're preaching to the choir on that. We agree with you.
To 9.3, and then also, we've got the issue, and I'll just throw this in for the conversation. My concern is, is that I believe in TIF projects. I think that they're a good way to kickstart economic growth. I think that they have their place in a city operation. But we are getting to the point, in my opinion, we're getting to the point where I am fearful for the deferred tax payments that the school district is not going to receive. And I know that that's always a conversation that you guys probably have in your budgeting or whatever. But I'm coming to you on this side of the aisle. I've got truly huge concerns. We are up to $151 million in TIF projects from the reports that I saw.
That's not TIF dollars. That's total project costs.
Total projects. You add 9.3 to that, now we're up to 160, 160 million?
No, you wouldn't add the 9.3. You would add the total reconstruction cost. If, just like any project, I actually am not sure what the total with NDOT's portion is.
30-something million.
Right. So you would add 30 million to that 150, because that's what that number is. It's not the TIF portion. It's the total investment of the projects that have any TIF in them.
So if it goes from 151 at the current number, if this project goes through, what is that number, Tara?
180 million.
Okay. And then the project that is under consideration in the new Area 10, if that project goes through, then what are we up to?
We don't have a scope on that project.
Don't have a scope on that. So if you take the numbers and you do the math, what are we deferring? How much money would we be deferring? I call it deferred. You call it whatever you want to do. That's so that I understand it. How much money would we be deferring? Because these projects are lined up so quickly and all concentrated together. It's not like, here's one that, and in five years it gets paid off, but then there's another one, and we've staggered them. We have put all of these TIF projects all together, and therefore, that majority of that money is going to be deferred en masse for 15 years to the school district. Are we sure that we're doing the best thing? It's a good thing, like you say, for the city to do these projects at the time, you know, open it up, do the work while it's opened up, but are we damaging the school system?
Well, let me address that, so it doesn't go unanswered. We did have a direct discussion with CPS about the pool TIF on 23rd. We had a sit-down one-on-one, and I won't speak for the Superintendent of Columbus Schools, but I can tell you he was okay with our plan. Part of the reason, and again, I'm not going to, this is not a quote, but I believe I'd be safe in saying, part of the reason you take this kind of project, it is not in any way an influx of families or new students. It's a betterment of Columbus. So the school district is not seeing maybe more kids coming into their system. What it's doing, it's beautiful, you know, it's a betterment for the city. So in that regard, this particular project that you identified was discussed directly with Superintendent of Columbus Public Schools.
And the school board also?
I don't know what the school, I don't sit on the school board. I said we had a discussion and laid out our plan with the superintendent.
And I would add that all taxing entities are notified. They get a certified letter every time a TIF project happens. So if they had concerns, if they had questions or anything, they would contact me, I would presume, come to a meeting. I haven't received any communication from that.
Tara, in that letter, that notification that you're saying that the entities get told that this is coming up, are they given a summary or a running total as to where we are with the TIF projects? Because this would be number 20, correct?
They're not given a running total. They are notified that there's an impending hearing, and that if they have any questions, there's some basic facts about the project. If they have any questions, here's a public hearing date. You can contact me. The plans are out on file in the clerk's office. We haven't had any taxing entities come to us and talk about this. And I totally, I totally understand what you're saying. We have done a lot of TIF in the past few years, but there's also been a lot of stuff happening in Columbus in the past four years that, you know, wasn't really happening all that much before. So at the end of the day, and before we started TIF, you know, four years ago in a bigger way, especially on housing, I sat down with a couple of members of the school board at that time and the superintendent and talked about this and explained it. And I have a letter on file from the school about TIF and their general opinion about TIF. So it hasn't gone, all this hasn't happened without a lot of communication and a lot of open, you know, dialogue and transparency with all the taxing entities, but especially the school district.
Because that is one of my big concerns, is what will happen if we do see the population of the, say, elementary students and a new elementary school has to be built? They come to the table and they tell the assessor, "We need X amount of dollars for our portion of the taxes." Then how are we going to pay for that? Because the other thing is, the comment about this pool TIF, this specific project, not the other ones, I'm talking this specific one, by saying it will not raise your taxes, I don't believe that that's a fair thing to say. It should say it will not raise your current taxes, but in consequences, if that school system has to come back and ask for more money because of a project or they need to do something, the only way that they can raise that revenue is by taxing the citizens of Columbus. So it does have the possibility.
So you're suggesting we do nothing that could possibly raise taxes somewhere in the future? Because something might happen and something could be bad.
No, Mr. Mayor, that's not what I'm saying.
Well, I mean, you're asking us to look at the negative side, and I'll be honest with you. When we put programs together like this, we possibly look at it with an optimistic view. We want to be, but we need to be real. We need to look at what the future could hold. But who knows how that will evolve?
Maybe I need to restate what I'm saying. I don't want it told to people in meetings that this will not raise your taxes. That's not the correct way to express it. Is that in some circumstances, it could happen. Because the minute that you tell people, "This is not going to raise your taxes," and down the line, something happens and the tax has to go up to support something in the school, they're going to come back and they're going to say, "You told us that this would never happen."
No, that's...
What I'm asking, I'm not asking you to, we can't talk about the future because we don't know the future.
Right. We've never said that this pool TIF won't raise taxes. What we've said is that property taxes paid by property owners will not be affected whether this passes or not. If they are going to pay 2% more on average over the next, I don't know, five years, they would do that whether this passes or not.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah. We're on the same page. I'm just saying...
Well, the way you said it, I wanted to make sure everybody understood that whether this passes or not will not impact what the property, what the assessed value is or what the property taxes paid is on a property. It will not.
And I understand what you're saying.
Yes, I understand what you're saying.
And it can be implied. I mean, a lot of it, Kim, can be, are you explaining it as the glass half-full? Or is the glass half-empty and how people look at it in regard to that?
I'm just trying to make it so we don't get phone calls like we get. Is that if we're... Is that if we're upfront with, with how this is going to work, because it is an advantage to the city, I think all things will be fine. But that's, that's
And, and you know, one of your very first questions was, is there, if there is a shortfall, what happens? The city is responsible. And let's not forget, even with this pool TIF, we are looking at a three-point
We'll still have to pay about 30% of this project out of the
Out of sales tax.
Out of the general fund.
Which is a three-point-some million.
Best-case scenario.
You know, compared to the five. So we're not off the hook because we're doing TIF financing. We're giving ourselves another opportunity for financing it. Another tool in the toolbox.
I get that.
I mean, I appreciate, you know, I hope you felt my answers were not, you know, nay. I appreciate your comments and your concerns.
Well, like I said, I wanted to come face-to-face because I, I didn't get all the responses that I was hoping to get, because I like to hear, maybe I'm missing something, maybe I'm not looking at this correctly. But I think it's important enough that these type of projects, especially when we're committing to the city, to be liable for the bond, these are questions that I think the citizens have a right to know and, and that way, everybody's on the same page.
Absolutely.
Definitely.
Does anybody have any questions for Kim?
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Is this for Kim or for Jim?
Probably the city engineer.
Okay, thanks, Kim.
23rd Street is still part of Highway 30. Is the state going to help pay any of the paving costs for the cement?
Yeah, so, so that's 80% of their part. That's a non-betterment they pay for. We pay 20% of the non.
All right, well, thank you.
Any other, do we have anyone else that wants to speak against this public hearing? Anyone want to speak for this public hearing? What do we got?
Barton Barcel, 310, 41st Road, Bellwood, Nebraska. I own the clock tower strip out there. Just a question of clarification, I'm not really for or against. I actually believe in TIF. I've used TIF in several other cities, never in Columbus. But if I was wanting to develop my property, is that TIF now going to be, that option not on the board anymore?
No, and that's good question, great question. So, and this is one of the things we talked about early on in our discussions about this, that if, if this passes and the council approves the pool TIF for all of Area 6, if a standalone project comes along and needs tax increment financing to go on their own, all's we, all's the council needs to do is come in and amend this plan and basically take that property out so they can do a standalone project.
Okay, very good.
So it doesn't prohibit future projects.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One, if we go beyond the 27%?
27%? If, if we raise the 6.63 earlier than 15, we can't raise anymore.
No, what I'm saying, we can only have so much blighted property.
Right.
So if we go above that and Mr. Barcel comes back after he's told that he can do it.
We can amend a different area and take some land out and, you know what I mean? We could change the total blighted area if that was the pleasure of the planning commission and council.
One question I was asked, and I, I don't know if we have the question, the answer, maybe you do. So if I'm a property owner and I get my statement, does my statement show the normal value? And then do I get a second statement that shows my TIF value? Do you know, Tara?
I do, I do not believe so. I don't believe that anybody who, I believe everybody who gets a property tax statement, it looks the same, but the assessor knows that, that increment goes to pay off a TIF note, because they get a notice to divide. So if you divide a property A today and its property value is $100,000, that $100,000 and the taxes paid on that continue to go to all the regular taxing entities. After that notice to divide is filed, any future growth over $100,000 goes to pay off the TIF for a maximum of 15 years or until the amount is paid off. So I don't think a, a property owner sees that, but the assessor sees that.
Would, if I was a developer?
Yeah, if you were a developer, you would know that.
It would come to me and show the different values, but just as a
Just as a regular property owner, you wouldn't see the difference, right?
And we can, but that, I think, is an answer right now, that the best to our knowledge. Okay? All right. Anyone to speak for? Anyone else to speak for this public hearing? I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed, nay.
I'm going to have to read this again. Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 7A1, resolution number R21-65, approving the amendment to the redevelopment plan.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R21-65 be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R2165. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed, nay. We'll go with a voice vote again.
Okay. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Hemer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 7B, public hearing, application of Granville Custom Homes Incorporated to rezone property on attractive land located on the east side of East 14th Avenue and north of Armory Drive from RR Rule Residential District to R22 Family Residential District. This is continued from the April 19, 2021 meeting, and the planning commission recommends approval.
Anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Steven Romikers, Granville Custom Homes, 4514 Howard Boulevard, Columbus. I'm the applicant here on behalf of Granville Custom Homes, available to sponsor this and answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Ray Makers? Thank you for being here.
Yep, thank you.
Entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, are we going to vote or go by roll call?
Who made, who made the second? Things opening up on yours? Okay, let's go roll call.
Let's just roll call the rest of the evening.
Sure. Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Yes.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Yes.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 7B1, ordinance number 21-15, approving the rezoning.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the rules be suspended and ordinance number 21-15 be read by number only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 21-15 by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed, nay. Roll call vote, please.
Lor?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Brings us up to
The ordinance.
Pat, we've got to adopt the ordinance.
Ordinance number 21-15.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance 21-15.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 21-15. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Farr?
Aye.
Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Brings us up now to reports of city offices.
Item 9A, amended 2020 tax increment financing report. We just brought this back because there was discussion at the last meeting about some additional information, so that was added. If there's any questions, we can answer those. Otherwise.
Yeah, as Tara mentioned, there was enough discussion at our last meeting and a request for more information. So although the last meeting had the necessary material on it for the state requirement, we did want to get everything out to, obviously, the council members and then the public if they would have any discussion. So I don't know if anybody has any questions regarding what's been put together in this format, and this will be the format you will see in the future. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to reports on new business.
Item 13A, appointment of Dawson Brunswick to the Citizens Advisory Review Committee for a four-year term.
Council members, with your permission, the mayor would like to submit Dawson Brunswick for appointment at the, for the Citizens Advisory Review Committee, which is a four-year term. Dawson Brunswick, oh, let's see, sorry. The Citizens Advisory Review Committee requires a member who is the president or board member of the Chamber of Commerce Executive Board. Dawson Brunswick joins the committee in that capacity as the new president of the Columbus Area Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Brunswick served as president and CEO of the McCook Chamber of Commerce from 2019 until joining the Columbus Area Chamber this March. He has served on the McCook Economic Development Corporation's Board of Directors and has promoted the overall business environment and quality of life in the McCook community. Dawson's other professional experience includes sales for VK Electronics, representation of the Shadrin State Student Body on the Nebraska State College System Board of Trustees, and as a business development agent with MNB Insurance Services, Inc.
Do I have a motion to appoint?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote. I'll, go ahead, please.
Schilling?
Aye.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Yes.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 13B, appointment of Michael Hancock as firefighter EMT hazmat tech.
Council members, with your permission, the mayor would like to submit the name of Michael Hancock for appointment to the position of firefighter EMT hazmat tech. Per council rules, the two-week waiting period is waived for an appointment of paid firefighter. Mr. Hancock was certified for firefighter EMT hazmat tech by the Civil Service Commission at their meeting held on March 23, 2021. Michael Hancock is a graduate of Battle Mountain High School in Edwards, Colorado. He has attended Colorado Mountain College in Edwards, Colorado, and Southeast Community College in Lincoln, Nebraska. He has certification as firefighter 1 and 2, EMT, paramedic, and hazmat operations. Michael has most recently been employed with Midwest Medical Transport in Lincoln, Nebraska as a paramedic. We would like to have a motion for this ratification, please.
Mr. Mayor, recommend the appointment of Michael Hancock as firefighter EMT hazmat tech be ratified.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Motion carries.
You were holding your breath because you were waiting to see if you got in, don't worry you. Michael's in the audience, we'd like to introduce him. Would you please come forward? Chief Miller, would you like to come up and say anything?
Yes, Chief Miller. I'd like to welcome Michael Hancock to the Columbus Fire Department. Look forward to having you with us for a long period of time in the future. And if you could, introduce your traveling companion there as well, so.
So, congratulations, thank you. Oh, that's my girlfriend, Tina. I'd like to thank the city of Columbus and the Columbus Fire Department for this opportunity. I look forward to starting my position in the coming days, and I look forward and am very excited to help out the city of Columbus.
We're glad, we're glad to have you. Welcome.
I don't know, can I ask this question? Chief, are we, where are we at for staff-wise? Are we full?
We're full for about a month. Can I reach out one hand?
Okay, thank you.
Item 13C, specifications and estimate of cost and the amount of $60,000 for breathing air compressor, storage system, and fill station for the fire department, and authorization to advertise for bids. Specifications are on file in the, at the fire department.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the specifications and estimate of costs for breathing air compressor storage system and fill station be approved and staff be authorized to advertise for bids.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, we will do a roll call, a roll call vote, please.
Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 13D, comments from the mayor and city council members in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. No discussion may be held on this item.
Do we have any comment? Yes, Mr. Creshaw.
Yes, I would just like to comment that the telegram tagged Columbus as the fifth safest town in Nebraska. And I would like to thank our first providers, the police and fire departments, for this honor.
Very good. It is, it is a nice compliment for our community. Anyone else have any comments? I have one I'd like to, to bring up. A couple of, three or four weeks ago, we had a committee of the whole, UP Railroad was in here to discuss our train crossing issues and blockages. They, I had a conversation with them last week. They're continuing to follow up with their homework. They do not have anything back to us yet. They did report that they have received only a handful of phone calls to the 800 number that's posted that they asked to have citizens utilize if there is blockages. That way, they have a, they do have a central point that any and all complaints and concerns go into regarding crossings, and that is to that phone number. So I would encourage everyone to please do that. If you are at a crossing and it is closed for an extended period of time, an inconvenience, it's 800-848-8715. It's the number that's printed on the little blue sign that's on every crossing, on every gate at every crossing. Along with that, I did have, we do have a citizen who's able to see the crossings, and I would say probably 95 to 100% of the time when they're, they're blocked, he has, that business has made notes. He has, he had given me the lists that I did transfer to them, so they are aware of all those. So we're staying on it. I just don't want the people to think that absolutely nothing happens, but as with government, railroads move slowly. Mr. Lor?
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of resolution number R two-one-six-six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R twenty-one-six-six, any discussion? Seeing none, all those, we will have a roll call vote.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Hemer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item fourteen B, resolution number R two-one-six-seven, approving the lease agreement with Loop River Public Power District for use of the H beacon for Columbus Municipal Airport.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of resolution number R two-one-six-seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R twenty-one-six-seven, any discussion? Seeing, I'm sorry, go ahead.
For purposes of our community, can someone please explain what we're doing here?
Sure, this is really a housekeeping item, the city, the airport, has had a beacon on a piece of property up north, kind of by the lake up north, and there is not a current lease agreement on file with either us or Loop, so it's really just cleaning that up, it's twenty-five dollars.
It's a very minor item, I understand.
Yes, yes, I understand.
But I didn't, I thought our citizens ought to know...
Yep.
What was going on, thank you very much.
Good question, good question. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, sign, roll call vote, please.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Motion passes, brings us up to ordinance on the first reading.
Item fifteen A, ordinance number two-one-one-six, amending the pay plan for all classifications within the city by changing job title in grade B fourteen from street foreman to street crew leader.
Mr. Mayor, I move, move that the rules be suspended and ordinance number twenty-one dash sixteen be read by number only.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number twenty-one dash sixteen by...
Oh, suspend the rules.
Oh, I'm sorry, to suspend the rules and read ordinance number twenty-one dash sixteen by number only.